So we're going to now start the Committee of the Whole meeting. And if anybody wishes to participate in public participation, there are the yellow forums in the front by the desk at the door, and if you'd like to fill out those and give them to us, we will give you an opportunity to speak. All right, so for it's Monday, March 24th, the Committee of the Whole, I call it to order, and I'd ask the clerk to please call our roll.
Ms. Ammons?
Here.
Mr. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Jacobson?
Here.
Mr. Madigan?
Here.
Ms. Marlin?
Here.
Mr. Roberts?
Here.
Mr. Smythe?
Here.
Mayor Pressing?
Here.
Are there additions to the agenda, Charlie Smythe and Carol Ammons?
Yeah, if I could add a very brief discussion of council goals and next steps as item 12.
Okay. Is it what we need is probably a second on that and a voice approval?
Second.
All right, so discussion of council goals. And what was the other part? Oh, okay, you just said council goals, all right. All right, those in favor of adding that to the agenda indicate by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Okay, Carol Ammons?
And I wanted to add for, ask for a motion to reconsider on digital billboards to be added to this agenda.
I'll second that.
Okay. Okay, those, okay, there's a motion for digital billboards to be what reconsidered, what, tonight?
Yes, for, to be reconsidered. I'm gonna do a motion to reconsider.
All right.
Was that from the prevailing side?
I don't know.
Yes, I was on the prevailing side.
Yeah.
A negative vote.
Yeah.
I can't remember what the motion was, but I don't know if we can take final action on something that wasn't on the agenda.
We can have a discussion, we can't do anything of course about it.
Yeah, I think the appropriate thing is to add that as an item for discussion.
That's fine.
Yeah, that's what she's doing, I think.
Yeah, okay.
Well, we have to move it to a council meeting, so.
Right, yeah, it's basically we're starting all over again if you want to do it.
Yeah, all right, so, okay, those in, those supporting that and in favor of that discussion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No? Okay. So that will be added to the agenda as number 13. All right, any other additions to the agenda? Okay. All right, we have several staff reports tonight, and actually, I'm going to do the first one. I'm gonna have help here from Subash Bagwat, if you'd like to come forward. We have a couple of staff reports from city staff, but this is kind of more from the community, so we'll start with that. And we're going to do a presentation to you on upcoming events related to the Sister Cities Program. Subash is one of the members of our committee and is going to be participating in this upcoming Sister Cities Conference in Washington, DC. This is the U.S.-China Sister Cities Conference, and this has to do with, it's kind of a culmination of the program that we've been involved in for about two years, the Sinno-African Initiative. There's going to be kind of a capping off of the program which is now completed, a report of all the sister cities that are participating in it, of which Urbana was one of three. Okay, next slide, please. Thank you. So the Sinno-African Initiative project was a $100,000 grant that came from Sister Cities International, and our Sister City Committee was one of the three recipients in the nation for this grant project. And it involved partnering with our sister city in Malawi, which is the city of Zomba, and our newest sister city, Haizou District, in the city of Guangzhou, to solve issues relating to sanitation, waste disposal, and health. Okay, the next slide. You went a bit too far. So really, that's just, I guess, verbiage about what we were going to do. The Zomba, the partnership decided that construction of new communal refuse spankers, a new composting site for the city near the landfill, and buying a compactor truck to transport solid waste were the main issues. They also added a repair of a sewer line near the hospital. And these are the projects that were chosen to be completed by the Zomba Sister City Local Community Committee. And our, and the intent is to include the Chinese sister city representatives in solving this issue with our Urbana team. So, next one, thank you. Just to show you what the conditions were in Zomba that they're trying to address, trash mounds were prevalent in the community, in the urban areas, and as a sanitation effort, we're trying to remove those and teach better waste gathering practices in the community. Okay, thank you. So one of the first things that happened was that the group sent delegates to Malawi to study the issue. There was a training, a training exercise in Africa before this, but I skipped that over, and here we are in Malawi, and the team made up of members from Urbana and representatives from Haizou District are on the ground and talking about the problems that they're trying to solve. Okay, the next slide. At the same time, because intercultural exchanges were a very keen part of this program, we had representatives from Malawi come to visit the United States, and they visited Urbana in 2012, and it was about March of last year, I guess it was last year, when we had that giant snowfall. They arrived the first day of, the second day they were there, that we had the largest snowfall of the year. They, so most of them, for the first time, saw snow. They met with, in the upper left is a picture of a meeting at the African Studies Department at the University of Illinois. The upper right is meeting with our own Public Works Department, Bill Gray and many others, and a wonderful mentoring opportunity for the individuals who came from Malawi. And we also had a Malawi mixer party for them, and here's a picture of the poster and people enjoying refreshments during the mixer. Okay, thank you. And of course, part of the program was to bring the, our African sister city partners and the people from Urbana to visit and explore opportunities of learning about waste management and water quality control in China. And so there was a trip to China that they participated in, and they visited water treatment plants and a waste, solid waste treatment facility. Thank you very much, to the next one. So the projects that they accomplished are pictured here on this slide. The construction of a sorting station at the landfill, which is on the left. There was bunkers built in several different locations in the city to collect waste. And they had held composting and waste practice sensitivity sessions in the community, to which a very large number of people came, and they enacted different scenarios concerning collecting and composting waste matter through acting out through street theater programs, which is shown up in the top right. Okay, the next slide. And this is a slide poster that we're going to be taking to us with Washington, to Washington, DC on Wednesday and Thursday of this week. The conference, the U.S.-China conference starts Wednesday night with a reception at the Chinese Embassy, and there's a day and a half of programming. And then those people who are going from our community, which Subash is one of them, Chris Store, Scott Tess from the Public Works Department, Sam Smith, and who did I forget? Oh, Jim, John Dimmitt is going to, are going to represent us. And on Friday and Saturday, they're going to visit the Malawi Embassy in Washington, DC, and they're going to do special study sessions on the success issues and problems that they overcame during the conference period concerning our project. Okay, thank you. So that's happening this weekend, but I wanted to also forewarn everybody and invite people to an upcoming event sponsored by the Illinois Sister Cities Association. Our Sister City Program is a member of that association, and I serve on the board myself, the state board. And we were able to invite the state to come down to Urbana for the 2014 conference, which we're holding here in the city of Urbana. The site for the meeting is going to be at the renovated and open Urbana Landmark Hotel here in downtown. We're going to have about 80 to 90 people staying overnight and visiting and doing workshops. Here's a picture of a previous Sister Cities meeting that was held in another city, I think this was in, up in northern Chicago suburb, and Tinley Park, actually, southern Chicago. So, next slide. The conference will start on Saturday, September, April 12th. There'll be breakout, four, there'll be five breakout sections, sessions of particular interest, perhaps to people here in Urbana, will be a slide presentation about the history of China and the University of Illinois and its century of relationships concerning exchanges and of public information and students. We're also going to be hosting the appearance of well-known international artist Liu Zhonggang. He's a watercolorist from Beijing. We were able to visit him in his studio and his home when we took a trip to open up our sister city relationship in July, and he's going to be visiting with us. We're going to have a historic marker dedication of the Joseph Royer Arts and Architectural District for both the hotel and the Urbana Free Library. There's going to be a wine and view networking party at the hotel, and then there's going to be an evening buffet, international cultural performance, and we're going to top the evening off with a Malawi mixer, which is a dance party. We're going to have Winanga Katunas, Malawi band, it's a popular music band, they actually come from Indiana, and we've scheduled them to entertain us for that evening. And then on Sunday, the business meeting will take place for the, for the, for the association, followed by a buffet lunch, and we're going to, we've invited Lula Chen, who directed our Sinno-African Initiative Grant Program. She is a staff person at Sister Cities International, and she's going to be talking about her experience for the last several years managing this grant project. So that's the program. In conference, the conference, if you want to attend and enjoy it, there's a registration, and it's online, there's, you can go to Eventbrite and look under 2014 Urbana Sister Cities Program and look for the conference and register. And the next slide. Here's our poster for the event. We'll be passing these out. You'll notice that there are various levels of registration that you can use if you want to participate a little bit or a lot in the program. And then the final slide, please. So this is the, this is our invitation for the Malawi mixer dance party, and if anybody wants to come just to dance, you can pay $10 at the door and have a lot of fun for about two hours of dancing in the hotel grand ballroom. So we'd be enjoying, we'd enjoy having your company. So that's the newest news from the Sister City Program. Thank you very much. Okay, so we have also a couple of staff reports, and Tom, do you want to start? Okay.
I would like to introduce Lisa Hatchidorian, the city of Urbana's new public arts coordinator, and Lisa is going to give a brief presentation on some arts activities.
You should have in front of you a sheet that looks like this, it's not in your packet, it's separate. This, and actually, I'm here to just update you on the 2014 Urbana Arts Grants Program. And what you have in front of you is a snapshot of the 2014 awarded grants, and I'll just give you a brief synopsis of what information transpired. We had 40 projects applied this year with a total request of $138,500 in project funds, ended up funding 32 projects and gave out $47,500 in funding. Within the projects that applied, we had 18 previous applicants and 21 new applicants in this cycle. Six grants were funded that dealt with projects in Urbana schools. Any questions before I go on to some quick announcements? Okay.
Are there any questions?
Okay, just reading.
Some announcements just pertaining to public arts program. Thursday, April 3rd, from 5:30 to 7, we're having a reception to celebrate the 2014 Urbana Arts Program grant recipients, and this is going to be at Pizza M. in Urbana. Saturday, April 19th, the King Park sculpture that was dedicated in December by Preston Jackson, I'm sorry, the King Park sculpture that was finished in December by Preston Jackson will be actually dedicated on April 19th. And Cinema Gallery in Urbana is having an exhibition of Preston Jackson currently, and the opening reception will be this Saturday, March 29th at 6:00, and the exhibition runs through April 24th. Thank you.
And welcome to Urbana.
Thank you.
And it's nice to meet you, I guess, formally. Yes, Carol?
Just one question, are these up on the website?
They are.
The dates that you just gave?
Yes.
And if you could, I was going to ask you something else about Preston Jackson's, it's on April 19th.
The dedication.
The actual dedication?
Yes.
Okay, all right, I'll contact you about that.
Okay.
Great. All right, and we have one more, Bruce Carverly.
Hold on, I gotta call it up again, disappeared.
It's the mystery presentation.
All right, I'm here to give you a, an update on the seating area for the market square.
Down to removable disc F.
Oh, there it is, okay, thank you. This is the project we brought to you about a month ago, and we put together a bid that went out, and we opened last week, and it came back much higher in price than we were anticipating, so we've made some adjustments that I wanted to bring tonight. The area, the seating area here, was originally going to be in pavers. We're now going to use a crushed granite, like you see in parts of the city complex adjacent to the parking lots and other parts of the city, that we also sell at the LRC, so it's a product that we carry, it's good to have that. And it makes a nice base for the tables to go on. After talking to the contractors, basically what I'm hearing is it's such a small project, that in order for them to bid it, they have to push the price way up to make it worth their while. So we're actually going to do this in-house. And so currently, the supervisor for our concrete crew, Mark Atkins, has called in to Julie to get the utilities marked, and the old sidewalk that's currently right about where the wall and the planting area meet will be taken out. A new sidewalk will be put in on half of the one parking spot to the north, and then new curbing will be put in. In order for us to do this in-house, we're going to have to do it in a series of steps. So what will happen is we'll, we'll be putting in this crushed granite so that we can create a seating area so that it can be used, it will be available by May 1st, and the plantings will go in, but the wall will probably be early summer. We have a number of other projects we have to get done before we can get to that, but we will buy the materials, have it on hand, and as soon as we get a couple other projects, like putting in the bike racks and things like that, then the Arbor Division will install the wall, probably in July.
Does anybody have any comments or questions regarding that? Charlie?
Yeah, Bruce, thanks. I missed the first presentation on this, I was out of town, but gotten some feedback from folks, and I guess you're going to go with some larger trees now to try to get shade sooner than later?
The two trees we're putting in are this crab apple and then this coffee tree, the largest of this crab apple. I kind of played around with names, it's going to be a harvest gold crab apple, so it goes with the farmer market. That's going to be of a two and a half inch diameter trunk, roughly 10 feet tall. The espresso coffee tree is going to be a two inch diameter, I tried to find one larger, but two inch diameter should be about 12 feet tall.
Yes, Eric?
Is this area potentially suitable site for Hackberry furniture suitably treated for outdoor use?
Oh, this one? I don't think Hackberry holds up really well to the outdoor elements.
I see, so Hackberry, just, Hackberry furniture should be indoors?
Yeah.
Any other comments? Mayor?
What were the bids?
The low bid was $25,500.
And what was your estimate?
At the high end, I was expecting $15,000.
Okay.
I think we'll be able to build it for at least $10,000 below what we brought to you by doing it in-house.
And Bruce, can you explain what this crushed gravel's, is it going to be like a gravel base? It's not going to be, it's not going to be a paver base, it's not going to be cement pavers or anything like that?
No, no, it's going to be a granite that's crushed, if you want to see it, it's used in the parking lots behind this building where the bumpers overhang, the parking lot, what is that, to the east of this building?
Is this this red rock that's also been used?
Yes, yes.
Where sidewalks haven't been replaced, and they just throw down this red rock temporarily for the next five years?
Yeah. I mean, we've used it for walks, also there's one over at the Public Works Building and other places. It makes a good surface for this type of use.
So what about shoveling it or something? I mean, I guess that doesn't matter.
We're not planning to keep this clear of snow.
Okay, all right, all right. Does it have to be compacted?
Yes.
Okay.
Others?
Eric?
So actually, I mean, we're forced into it, but I actually kind of think I like that better than pavement.
I mean, I've seen it used in gardens, and for this type of use, it is a very good surface. Anymore?
Anybody else? Yeah, Michael?
So the crushed granite is permeable, right?
Yes.
So we don't have to worry about charging a stormwater management fee? Oh, wait a minute, it's the city.
[laughing]
Yeah, only I have to pay that. We all do?
We all pay.
Okay, yeah, one way or another. So when you say that, I'm not trying to be adversarial here, and I understand that small jobs, contractors have to be careful about their bids. When you say that the city can do it for $10,000 less, is that an all-in cost, including personnel and every conceivable expense?
No, I'm looking at materials, I mean.
Okay, so labor's not included in that?
Right.
Okay.
Anyone else?
Others? All right, thanks for the update.
You're welcome.
All right, so I guess we're going to go now to the next item, which is approval of minutes of the meeting of March 10th, 2014. Okay, it's been moved by whom? By Charlie? And seconded by, and Carol? Is, were there any corrections or discussion about the minutes case? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, the minutes are approved. All right, it's time for hearing from the public, public input. We've got various people who'd like to speak pretty much before. So we'll start with Coletta Donaldson, which would like to come forward.
Thank you. It's Coletta Donaldson, 406 East Brookins Drive in Urbana. I first like to say, I'm sure a lot of the residents in southeast Urbana are glad that the zoning department or zoning commission did not pass the disordinate, sorry, the ordinance change for, the zoning change for the bread and breakfast that was to go in southeast Urbana. So I do thank the zoning department for that or the zoning commission. But as you see before you, you have all of the boards and commissions, I believe there's 26, the city of Urbana. And one thing that we found out was that anything done with the zoning Board of Appeals, I guess that's the correct term for the commission or board, does not have to go before the council for approval. The approval or turning down of the request stays with the board. Looking at this list here, are there any other commissions or boards that don't have to come to the city council for final approval? Can someone answer that for me? Yep?
Take that one.
Well, just looking at this, the Civil Service Commission acts, you know, they don't usually bring things. The pension boards are self-contained. Mark at the Square Advisory Board, I guess they don't have, they don't, I don't think they bring things to the, to the council unless it was something dramatically different. But those are the ones that jump out at me.
Mayor? Yeah. If the traffic commission votes something down, it doesn't come to the council.
Okay.
Others? Eric?
The Public Arts Commission, the grants that were alluded to earlier are made, the board approves the entire public arts budget, but they don't approve individual grants, and it's a darn good thing. We don't want the politicians getting messed up with that.
Okay.
Okay.
Others? Anybody else? Yes, Bill?
I think on the zoning Board of Appeals, some things they passed do have to come to council. If it's a special use, it would have to come to council, but I think this was a non-conforming use or something like that.
So special use permits?
Yeah, I'd have to check, but there's a couple different things. Some things that go through zoning would come to council.
Okay.
It was a conditional use, but if it's a special use, it would have to come.
It has to come, okay.
Yeah, and I would say that probably the Tree Commission, the Library Board, the Public Television Commission are all commissions that meet and function and very seldom.
The Library Board, I'm sorry, and what was the other one you said?
Well, the last, the Tree Commission, Library Board, and the Public Television Commission are typically make their own, conduct their own meetings, and almost never do we hear from them.
Okay. And then my final question, and thank you. My final question is the King Sculpture Dedication on April 19th. I know that it's on the website, but for those that may not have access to the website, what time?
It hasn't been decided yet.
Okay.
Okay, it hasn't been decided yet?
It has not, okay.
Can you reiterate?
All righty, that's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, I have here that the Bishop King and Reverend Evelyn Underwood would like to comment that the, did not choose to address the committee, but they asked that their concerns about the Dr. Ellis Advisance sewer problems be entered into the, into the record. And now, and also Erin Ammons.
Good evening, everyone. Ammons, I just hear it all the time. It's okay.
Let's get it right, okay.
Erin Ammons, 1108 North Abucy. The comments that I have tonight are a relationship to the task force that was assembled to address the issues of racial disparities for its traffic stops in the City of Urbana. And while I am encouraged by the fact that there is a task force to look at this particular issue and that our community is excited about being able to actually see what's underneath the concerns and the disparities, I'm troubled that we, by some of the appointments or lack thereof, and there's one person in particular that I want to raise a concern about because of this person's knowledge about the subject. And so I have personally worked with Mr. Duro Cruz for the last seven years, well, longer than that, on issues of social justice in the community. And I have spent ample time with him and watched him over the years deal with this issue of the traffic stop data in Champaign with the county and as well as with the City of Urbana. And I'm just troubled that someone who has spent the last seven years studying this information and who has brought forth very good ideas and unearthed some very serious concerns is not being considered or is not appointed to this particular task force. And I know that the mayor makes that particular appointment, and I'm concerned that, from what I've heard from other people, it's not just my own personal concern, I have been approached by several members in the community, and not just African-American members, but saying that how are we supposed to conclude that this task force is actually serious about looking at the particular issues that we have in this area when someone who has studied the information for the last seven years, who would be considered probably the premier expert that we have in the community around this topic, is not appointed to the task force? Does that, it gives us the impression that there's not going to be the type of in-depth look into this information that is necessary, or there's some other personal reasons why he was not appointed? One of the things that is extremely important to me when I think about this topic, and it's one of two issues that are extremely important to the African-American families in this community in particular, the other being the impact of the failed war on drugs, and I'm sure Chief Conley and some of us will have further discussions about that with the members of the UCAT team that I'm a part of. But when I think about the financial impact that it's had on African-American families, something to the tune of $1.4 million over the last nine years that our families have paid above and beyond what we would have paid based upon our driving population. So we have paid more, $1.4 more million more than what would be projected that we would pay based upon our driving population, which comes out to about $155,555 per year that our families are being taxed more than what they should have. And this is, of course, coming from one of the ethnic groups that is probably the majority living below, at or below the poverty line. I think that should be alarming for the City of Urbana and for such a city as Urbana with as progressive as we are in this community. And so I think that we should very seriously consider these concerns. And again, I would like that there be a motion to reconsider the appointment of Duro Cruz to this particular committee and-
You have one minute, Mr. Aaron.
Thank you. I thought I had less time than that. I'll relax a little bit. And so I know that, Madam Mayor, you make those appointments, and I think that you have the right to make them without any consideration, basically from the council. I could be wrong, but I think it would be good for the community, for those who have approached me, and I would like to know why Mr. Cruz was not appointed to this particular commission, given all of the work that he has done around this particular topic. I find him to be qualified, and the members of the community that I've spoken with would really like to see him to be a part of this commission. My last point is that the six or maybe seven different organizations that petitioned the council for this particular task force, only one member of all of those organizations were appointed to the task force. And I don't understand why that would be the case. So I just wanted to register my concerns, and hopefully you will consider them. Thank you. Have a good evening. Any questions?
Any questions or comments at this point? Okay. Thank you. All right. That being the end of public input, we'll embrace the rest of the agenda. Beginning with ordinance number 2014-03-031 and ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for the year 2013 and 14 concerning curbanas pilot program. We have a presentation. All right, is it Carol, Carrie? Katie?
Kate Ferrer.
Kate, okay.
So about three weeks ago, I gave a presentation to the council about the concept for curbanas. And since then, we've actually received a lot of unanticipated press about the concept. The curbanas were featured on three local television newscasts. We had a front-page paper story in the news gazette. There was a radio interview, and I think most surprisingly, I had a planner from the City of Springfield call me to ask about the concept because they were, some businesses there were interested in having them put in in front of their businesses in Springfield. So when I last made the presentation, we were still working with Public Works to determine the most cost-effective solution for something like this. And I think after considering all of our options, staff are recommending that we purchase a prefabricated decking system and combine that with a railing system that's built in-house by our Public Works staff. And the reason for that is because the cost savings for building the railing system in-house are substantial. It's about a $20,000 difference in project cost that we could save. This would still allow us to have a very tastefully designed structure that would still have about the same expected lifespan of eight to 10 years. So you can see in these slides, these are some examples of deck systems with wood railings. So while we don't have an exact design picked out, you can see from some of these images, there are various ways to configure the railing to be ADA compliant while still being very attractive, and that would work with a prefabricated system for the decking that the actual chairs would rest on. So these are some examples from other communities, and you can see there's just a fairly wide variety of ways to build a railing around the structure that would significantly reduce the cost. I'd also like to add that we had two open house sessions. We did have about 12 people attend those, and the feedback was very positive overall. So given that, I'm here to recommend that we request a budget amendment in order to move forward with the project. The budget amendment would be for $25,000, which covers the cost for both curbanas, the prefabricated system, and the railings, as well as the cost for Public Works to fabricate a railing around the decking system. And the other element would be the curbana license fee, which would be a $250 annual fee for users of the curbanas.
So are there people with questions or comments? Diane?
Given the location of these, one in front of Crane Alley and the other in front of Pizza M., is, I'd like to strongly suggest that shade be incorporated into the design, whether it comes from, you know, umbrellas over the table or a trellis or whatever as part of the surrounding thing. But I just think shade would be very important to make these usable through a lot of the day.
Okay. And I mean, I think we could definitely take that into consideration as part of a design element. We are planning to work with Public Works and, well, we would plan to work with Public Works and businesses to make sure it's attractive and within our budget and theirs.
Right. And some of the examples you showed us in the packet did have a awning or something in it, so I think it's doable. I think, just think it would be really important for that. And of course, some twinkle lights at night to make them more inviting.
Others? Bill?
Yeah, thanks. I think the last time we talked about this, there were a couple of concerns. It seems like you've addressed both of them. One of them was the cost, doing a lot of it in-house will help bring that down. And then the other, I think, was getting the businesses to contribute more, and it sounds like if they have to provide the furniture, that they'll be contributing that plus the $250 fee. So I guess I have one question about how the permit fee would work. What if somebody wants a permit, but there's no curbana? I mean, can they still get a permit and provide their own curbana? Or are we going to have some kind of ordinance that we need to put in place to handle that? Or it's just going to be, we say we're going to have two curbanas, and if you want them, you got to pay a permit? I'm not sure quite how that would work. So, and then I guess just to follow up with the furniture part, I think that is an interesting opportunity for businesses to really kind of enhance the curbana to reflect good positively on their business because they know that, you know, people will know that they're the ones maintaining the thing in front of their business, so they'll give them a little extra incentive to maybe, maybe even a little bit of competition between the two curbanas, who can provide the nicest atmosphere or something. So I think that's a good solution, and thanks for coming up for that. I did have several comments that, mostly positive, so I think the word was out there, even though a lot of people didn't come to the open houses, I went to one. And I thought it was great that you provided a lot of information there and it was available. But I think a lot of people just got their information through the media and other sources, so that's probably why you didn't get a real big turnout there. But one of the questions I had, somebody asked was, can a city do these without raising it to the curb level? And I said, I think it was an ADA thing that you need to have them accessible. Is that the right answer?
We did consider that, but I believe that we came to the conclusion that it would be safer to not have to step up or down to the surface and rather have it just flush with the curb, especially for handicap accessibility reasons. It would probably be safer if you did not have to step up or down or build a ramp to get onto the surface.
Then did you have any thoughts about the permit issue? Either one of you about if we need to control, who can apply for permits, or is it just going to work out okay?
Well, as I understand it, this will work the same way that the Sidewalk Cafe permit does. So you fill it out and you pay the fee. Because it's a pilot program, it is sort of in an awkward place where we don't want people filling out an application for something that doesn't exist. So I'm open to suggestions for ways to control that, since obviously we are only intending to purchase and build two curbanas at this time. Do you want to add to that?
Looks like Bill Gray's going to weigh in on something here. Bill, are you going to answer a question?
Well, just to reinforce, it is a pilot program, and that would be wonderful if we have six more applications, but there is a budget impact to the decision. If we're going to keep with this precedent of providing the curbana, then at $10,000 or whatever, $1,000 per, we're going to have to do that. So let's, you know, let's hope this is wonderfully successful and we have more applications in the future. And I would say we put that in the queue for future years. But no, we're not restricting permits per se, but there's a tipping point too with respect to on-street parking. And I'm surprised we haven't gotten more pushback, to be honest with you on that, but that's part of the pilot here is, you know, with four spaces out of circulation here, what will that do? There's plenty of space off-site, i.e. the parking deck, but for some, you know, that may not be the best answer. But no, I think in year two, three, four, we can add more locations. I don't think there's anything that would prohibit that, other than the city's ability to afford the curbana.
Carol?
I did want to ask Bill also the issue of, well, I have a couple of issues, not necessarily that I don't like, the idea is cute, but the use of the money at this point for this as opposed to maybe some sidewalk repairs, some other repairs that we can do in the city, and the impact of staff on building the curbanas as well as building the sidewalk seating at Market at the Square. What's the long-term impact of that? And then the third question is, okay, so it's great, and all the other businesses want it too. Is there any point where we say, you know, you'll have to ultimately restrict parking like some cities have done through their whole main street in order to accommodate this kind of thing? You know, what are we looking at long-term?
Well, hopefully a year from now, Kate will give a great review of the pilot program, and we could talk about, you know, what we want to do in the future with respect to that. So as far as impact to Public Works, there's some impact to our building facilities people. We have a couple of carpenters, other workers, but it's not a huge impact per se, so I'm not concerned about us not being able to get to other aspects of our work. And this would impact more the operations division. The market project is an Arbor Division impact. What Bruce didn't tell you is, is that we had planned over a year ago to be doing the mini park at the Northeast Corner Water and Broadway. We're not doing that this spring at this time, so this is kind of a substitute project for that project. So that's a little bit of the trade-off of what we had pre-planned. So I don't like lots of projects that kind of crept on you, but we know about, we knew about this project for two years, so we've been planning it for a long time. If you recall, well, this is before you were in council, the curbanas, yeah, last year we didn't proceed, even though we were talking about it in 2012, because we were going to do the major Main Street project, which is what took up last year. So we were already in the queue for a curbana idea in 2012. So this is not new for our staff to take this on.
Okay, Eric?
So it seems to me that the whole idea of tax increment financing is that in the long run, we're going to gain more in tax revenue by the enhancement. So presumably, net, through the life of the project, we should, it should be a moneymaker for us. And so I guess that's, so hopefully that'll, hopefully that'll be true, but I guess that the economic, you know, projections, as well as they can be done, would seem appropriate to be part of the review at the end of the year.
It'd be very difficult to say with curbanas without what that impact would be, but I think this is in keeping with the excitement that we're continuing to generate with downtown businesses, restaurants, et cetera, and it sounds like there's been great excitement about it, and we hope it will do that, and that will be another asset, if you will, or another sense of place of making downtown.
First, Charlie?
Yeah, I was going to suggest one answer to the issue, maybe that depending on how much it impacts parking and how much parking we're willing to give up, there may be a point where we do lottery for curbanas. The other issue that I was going to ask is, curban is out in front of one place, but somebody shops down the street. I think with our sidewalk permit now, you, people can basically, the public can basically come and sit down there anyway, right?
Yes, they are kept as open public space regardless of who is technically-
Yeah, so I know one of the issues was, you know, we have a restaurant that's opened up, well, the restaurant piece is a side business to the butcher next door, you know, they do some lunches and stuff like that. If people want to go out and sit outside in that space, they can, as I understand it then.
Yes.
And of course, he can also get his own sidewalk permit to at least have tables and chairs in front of his business.
Yes. By signing the curbanas agreement, they would be agreeing that it is still public space, and they can't prohibit people from using that space.
So I have a question then. One of the, one of the, one of the more proprietary aspects of it was who bears the insurance liability. So, I mean, it does seem like these outdoor seating areas that we're providing to, you know, downtown should be really open to all. So what's the, what are the limitations that are expected by the businesses as far as controlling the space that they're asking for in front of their business?
Well, if I understand your question, are you, are you asking about the control of, like, serving food or?
Control of seats, seating. If one business is taking out a permit, are they basically given the right then to allow or disallow seating, people seating in that space?
I think what he's saying is if they have to ensure it, can they exclude people? And I think the answer is no.
Yes. So the same is with the Sidewalk Cafe permit, even- Even though they do take out insurance to indemnify that space for their customers, they still can't exclude people from sitting in that area. So the same as the sidewalk cafe permit would be the cabanas permit.
Great, and thanks. That's what I was concerned about. Others? Bill?
I was curious, when you were talking to Springfield, were they going to call them cabanas or parklets?
Actually, they called to ask about cabanas, but I did wonder if they would have to come up with their own name.
Maybe we should trademark that.
Any others? Charlie?
We might be able to make some money by just selling our design too. So I'd like to move both ordinance number 2014-331, the annual budget ordinance, and 332, the schedule of fees adjustment to council with recommendations for approval.
Second on that. Is there one?
Second.
Second, Eric. All right, other discussion? Okay, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Are any opposed? Okay, those will be forwarded to council.
Thank you.
All right, thank you very much. Yes. Can we not do that? We need to... Oh, all right, so that was a vote to approve it in omnibus fashion as two items at once. So therefore, those in favor of, what, the emotions themselves? The in omnibus, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed? All right, thank you for that defined moment.
Thank you.
All right, yes, we, finessing would be better in some future moment. Okay, let's look at number seven on the agenda. Ordinance number 2014-03-033, an ordinance approving an easement on certain real estate. And this is a portion of real estate parcel with permanent index number 41-15-30-400-007, located in Champaign County, Illinois, concerning Tag Warehouse LLC. Who's going to make a presentation? Bill Gray?
Sorry. This evening is, I'd call it a landmark evening. This is the last easement or right-of-way acquisition we need to acquire for Olympian Drive. It's an easement, permanent easement with the Tag Warehouse. And if you're wanting to know what T-A-G stands for, it's the Atkins Group. We need a drainage easement on the west side of the tracks. This is in the City of Champaign area. It's their portion of what ultimately would be their jurisdiction to maintain the roadway system. We're the lead agency, so the money literally passes through the City of Urbana to pay for easements and right-of-way. You've already looked at similar requests for right-of-way for the Squire track and for the Heimberger track. In this case, we're not acquiring right-of-way. We're merely acquiring a permanent easement for drainage purposes. Again, our legal staff, along with City of Champaign and county representatives, have been involved in this discussion. And we're asking for approval for the budget amendment to, excuse me, not the budget amendment, but for the funding for the acquisition of this easement. And there are monies in our budget for this. Again, this is 100% reimbursed with the state capital bill program, which is Illinois Jobs Now. And just to give you information, Thursday on the IDOT bulletin, the Olympian Drive project is listed on the April 25 letting. So that's great news.
I move that we send ordinance number 2014-3-033 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Diane and Charlie seconded. Any other discussion about this? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And opposed? Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, number eight on the agenda. Ordinance number 2014-03-034, an ordinance amending Schedule E of Section 23-73 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, requiring obedience to no-turn signs. This is concerning Main Street at Race, Main Street at Broadway, Race Street at Main Street, and Broadway Avenue at Main. Bill, are you going to take this one again?
I will. The Traffic Commission met in March, and with the restriping, cross-sectional changes of Main Street, business owners, representatives approached the commission and asked that we look at the existing no-turn on red signs. Because we now have literally pushed all the traffic closer to the center of the roadway, there's much better visibility at the intersections where that wasn't quite the case in the past. The commission considered this and is recommending to you the removal of these no-turn on red signs, except for the eastbound Main Street at Race Street, where it's still believed that that southbound movement there is still a little bit difficult to see, and hence the continued placement of that sign. Staff will certainly monitor the intersections to see that there isn't crashes or other things that may be abated by reinstalling these signs. But we believe that it's prudent to go ahead and remove them. And this would help with the efficiency of the intersection, particularly if the first car waiting at the light intends to turn right, say, southbound at Broadway at Main, could make that right turn, whereas right now, you can't legally do that. So it helps with traffic efficiency a little bit as far as being at the intersections. The second, well, I'll stop there. If there's any questions.
So this one is really removing restrictions and allowing a freer flow of traffic based on observed safety at the moment in the corner.
Bill Brown?
I don't, did we get the minutes from the most recent Traffic Commission on this? It wasn't in this packet, but maybe is in a previous packet. So it'd be nice to have those before next week, if we could.
I thought they were.
It'd be the unapproved minutes.
They were last week's packet, yeah.
Okay, because I went online, read the weeks before, but they continued it to the next month or something for that one. Is there a criteria that the state produces as far as amount of pedestrian traffic that's on the street, where you have to measure that to see if you need to require no right turn on red?
Offhand, I don't know. I know part of the answer is engineering judgment and accidents or crash history. But I could email that information to all you with what that criteria is.
And then in those areas, are there always two lanes there? Or is there usually just one lane where if the person at the light didn't turn right, I mean, everybody behind him would be stuck, right?
I don't think I understand the question. Currently, there's one lane in each direction.
So having, allowing to turn on red would only help if the first person in line wanted to turn?
Right, correct. Yeah, if that car wants to go straight, it doesn't assist in any way.
Eric?
So in one way, I think this improves pedestrian safety, because if you have to wait for the light to turn green, and there are pedestrians on the corner who want to go also across the street, then you either have to, then the driver either cuts them off or waits longer for the pedestrians to go through. And of course, you know, hopefully, nobody's going to get run over that way. But that's, this really removes another point of pedestrian automobile conflict.
That scenario is true, but there are other scenarios too, so, but yes, that's true.
Okay, I've got a question too, Bill, and I'll get to you, Carol. Oh, so Bill, we've got timed and verbal, verbal queued symbols at the corner. And would that affect this in any way, as far as like, you know, safety expectations?
No.
Okay.
Carol?
I just wanted to ask quickly, the only one that I'm concerned about, I like all the other removals, but the one coming, coming east on Main Street at the corner of Race going south. The building that's on the corner, which is the instrument building, that's the one that I have the most, that I actually appreciate the no-turn on red right there, because I can't see around the building, and that little hump coming up, Race Street does provide some difficulty for visual seeing other cars.
Correct, so we agree with you, and that's the one that stays.
That is the one that's staying.
That one stays.
Because that's the one that's concerned.
No, we agree, there's still a concern with that.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Charlie?
Move direct, room to council with recommendation for approval.
Second.
All right, we've got a, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right, those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I do too, and opposed? Okay, that's unanimous, opposed to council. Thanks. Now we're going to go to Traffic Commission, ordinance 2014-03-035, an ordinance amending Schedule J of Section 23-183 of the Urbana Local Traffic Code, prohibiting parking at all times on certain streets. We're talking about Main Street between Weber and Lynn Streets. Yes, go ahead.
This request comes about, there's more parking on the south side of Main Street. You may recall, we removed parking on the north side of Main Street, and that block had a certain number of people that park on the block. And to help with people exiting or going northbound in the alley to make a right or left turn on the Main Street, the recommendation here is to enlarge the no-parking zone to provide for a little bit better visibility, if you will, for east and westbound Main Street. So that's the action being requested here, is to enlarge slightly the no-parking.
That's correct, okay. I did attend that meeting, and I heard that conversation myself. Anyone wish to ask, Bill, questions about this? I'd entertain a motion then.
So moved.
Carol?
Send it to council.
And seconded by Charlie?
No, Jacob's second.
Okay, misheard that. Other discussion? Those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That goes forward, thank you. All right, comes next, a resolution 2014-03-019R, a resolution for improvement by municipality under the Illinois Highway Code, 2014 motor fuel task, tax, resurfacing project. And, yes?
Good evening.
Please inform us what's an important thing to know about.
We're looking to resurface seven streets here this summer. We have a listing here of Washington Street and Broadway Avenue, which are near the high school, Race Street and Illinois Street, portions of that that are near Lincoln Square, Bucie, Kohler, and Iowa, which are just east of Lincoln Avenue. What we've got is, a part of the project will be funded with local motor fuel taxes in about the tune of about 1.2 million. The balance would be state motor fuel taxes, which is 600,000, and that's what we're asking for a resolution tonight for. Just to give you a little background, we're going to be doing basically a two-lift construction. So we'll be milling off, taking off the top, and putting back what's called a fine-graded leveling binder. And this is kind of something new that the Department of Transportation has come up with. It's a more dense type of binder that goes down. And then we're going to put down a engineered paving fabric, which will help slow down the reflective cracking that you see, of course, all over town. And then we'll cap that off with an inch and a half of surface course, or two inches, as the case may be. At two of the locations, Broadway Avenue and Race Street, there are scheduled bike lanes. I'll mention Broadway here in a minute further. But on Race Street, we're looking at a road diet there that would be very similar to Washington Street that we did last year. We have studied the impact of doing a road diet there. We hired Regional Plan Commission to do a simulation analysis. And we found that it can, in fact, perform adequately with the reduction in traffic lanes and the addition now of bike lanes. With respect to Broadway Avenue, that, the issue of bike lanes on Broadway is not finally resolved. We had intended to come to council in November, but out of respect for Mr. Pollak, who was an opponent of the bike lanes and his personal issues that he had, we delayed the bike lane basically coming to council. And now we will be looking to come here in late April, early May with that. But what we have to do tonight is move forward, because with the resurfacing part of it, we would like to do particularly Broadway and Washington when the students are out. I think the superintendent, when I spoke with him, he'd like to see that done, you know, at that time too. So, and then several other locations, we would, under a separate signing project, install bike route signs at various locations on these roads. So with council's approval, we would move forward with bidding this project in May and constructing it in the summer and fall.
Do we have questions for Craig? Yes, Michael?
This could be for Craig, or it could be for Bill. So 1.8 is the total expenditure we're talking about here, right? 1.8 plus, 600,000 is, explain to me, please, the difference between the 1.8 and the 600,000?
The 600,000 is embedded in the 1.8. So the way that we, you know, ideally, it would be nice to segregate those two uses, local motor fuel tax, state, but because of the amount of money that's involved here, we have to pool it. We get economy of scale, you know, with the bidders.
So then I guess my real, my, I appreciate that clarification. Now my question is, $1,835 for some resurfacing, how much of this could be delayed for a year in order to help us along with our Windsor Road project? It seems to me that resurfacing a few roads, worrying about bike lanes and signage and engineering costs related thereto, could be put off for a year to maybe offset almost $2 million of a $6 million project, thereby reducing the amount of money we have to borrow. These are the kind of decisions that a business of mine faces all the time. Do I borrow, or do I put off what maybe can be put off for a year, you know, to, in order to not have to borrow, to not have to pay interest, to not increase the expense to my bottom line? So I'm wondering out loud, and I know there's no answer to this, but I think we ought to seriously consider delaying each and every resurfacing project in this city, I'm sorry to say, because we have a crisis, a fiscal crisis with a major thoroughfare. And here's a third of, here's a third of the cost of it, sitting right here in ordinance. In, merely in resurfacing. So a minor inconvenience to me and every other resident and anybody else who travels the roads of Urbana, for several blocks not to be resurfaced for a year, we can offset that project by a third. So I would really seriously like that to be considered.
Okay, any more comments? Bill?
Well, I travel on DUC almost every day in Illinois. I'm familiar with Illinois and Washington. I know all three of those are in really bad shape. And so if we put it off this year, we would also be running into whatever the capital improvement plan had scheduled for next year that we would have to be using this year's money for. So we'd just be putting off, everything off for two years. So without looking ahead and seeing if we're going to be pushing off things down the line that also are near desperate situations, I'd be willing to look at that, but it might not be quite as easy as that.
Well, I would beg to differ on Illinois. I mean, maybe on a bike, it's bumpy, but in a car, it's just not bad at all. I mean, it's just not bad at all.
Okay, let's raise our hands. Yeah, Eric?
So maybe staff or mayor could correct me on this, but my understanding is that we don't have the kind of flexibility that a business would have in terms of moving money from one pot to another. That is, that the, I, but I might be misunderstanding this, but I thought that the Windsor Road money was really dedicated to that. And, and that, but maybe I can, maybe that can be elucidated.
Yeah, this is what, this is motor fuel tax, so, okay, Mayor?
The Windsor Road project, we've got...
The Windsor Road project, we've got about half of it paid for by the state, but the rest of it, we're going to have to borrow. So, it is a question of what do we do first? And it depends on how bad these streets are, because if you put them off, you've got to put more and more money into just keeping up on the potholes. So, would you like to comment on the trade-offs there?
The, the way the streets are selected is it's based upon the street ratings that occur annually. What's driving the selection is Washington was rated as poor, which is just a step above Windsor. It may not ride as bad as Windsor, but I mean, it's showing surface distresses that are of serious of concern to staff. Same thing with Kohler has sections that really are, are not that great. Illinois was fair rated. I mean, there are parts, you can see the brick at Illinois. So, yeah, there is a trade-off. Part of the task that we in engineering are trying to do is, you know, we do try to prioritize and look at, you want to capture, ideally, you want to capture streets before they get too poor. You want to reset them from fair back up. Because when we, when we do spend money on, you know, Windsor's really not a good example, but let's say it's a road that has failed, we spend a lot more money than we would have if we would have reset it earlier by just overlaying it sooner. This, these streets were previously in, are in the capital improvement plan, which was in last year's, this, this current fiscal year budget. So, that's why they're on the docket.
I've got a question for you also.
Sure.
Craig. So, you were commenting about delaying conversation about, or delaying a decision, final decision about Broadway Avenue because of concerns of the residents. And my understanding was that we were also looking at parking restrictions as being part of that.
Yes.
So, are you saying that basically they're back on the table and that you're, you're wishing to change, to install bike lanes on Broadway? Is that what you're telling us?
I, I'm saying that, yeah, we would come back to council. That decision was, the full decision was never finally made one way or another. And that we would be coming back to council to present information from a parking study. If you recall, there was, at that time, there was some lack of information about the use of parking at that location. Staff did count cars. And that is something that we want to basically present that information. And then, yes, council would need to decide, remove the parking for the bike lanes or no, we just go with, with the bike route type thing.
Which we have now, it's a bike route.
Yes, it's not officially signed that way, yes.
Okay, are you going to be informing the residents on the street that there's going to be a discussion coming up?
Yes, we will be sending out notices again. This, keep in mind, this is the resurfacing part of it. We usually couple in the, the striping with that just because it, it sits in better at that time. But in the end, if, let's just say, council wants even more information, but we're moving ahead with this train, so to speak, then we just don't stripe it. It's just not part of it.
Right, seems like it's a different thing altogether, deciding what the bike lane's going to be versus, you know, resurfacing a street.
Right, right.
I'm kind of find it a little bit disingenuous to like, make one dependent or dependent upon the other.
We, the way we, the staff, when we implement by, the bicycle lanes, we usually do that in conjunction with the resurfacing project. That's, that's how we've done it. It's better to do that than to go out and grind things off and redo them. And then paint, paint doesn't hold up as well as when it's brand-new. So, in the end, if, if, you know, council would wish to, we could even pull the, the striping from this contract and do it under our annual striping that we do in the fall, too.
Okay, others, Charlie and Carol, just one.
Yeah, actually, I was sort of surprised not to see Florida on here because Florida between Lincoln and Orchard is also in pretty bad shape. Or is that another year out?
That Lincoln, between Lincoln and Orchard was patched this summer by Public Works. And that's viewed as a temporary, but I will tell you that when I look at the balance of the streets, there are, there are other locations within the city that are more pressing than Florida. The other thing we look at, when we, we try to group streets together. So, that's why you see Iowa on there also, it's needed. You know, parts of Bucie, north and south are on that borderline, but it's easier to group those together than to be, you know, we come in and resurface just this one block, which is poor. And then we come back three years later and inconvenience everybody just to do another one.
Carol?
I, I need to ask process because, one, did I understand that we have to borrow money to do these resurfacing? I want to clarify that. And then, I thought it was all from motor fuel tax. But we don't have to borrow money to do that.
We don't have to borrow money to do this, what, what, what Mr. Madigan's saying. We will actually have to borrow money to supplement the construction of Windsor Road. So, we have some of the money on Windsor. We have to borrow the, the remaining debt.
And the, the other part, I'm sorry, I'll borrow in this map because I couldn't see it, but is this an analysis of the whole city? It looks like all of this is south.
Right.
I have reported North Bucie, which is completely unleveled. And it's been that way for at least thirteen years I've been here. But there's no spread out of the resurfacing projects throughout the whole city. And all of these are in one geographic location, and I, I'd like to understand why.
What we do is, again, we, we look at the worst of the streets that need to resurface and, you know, Washington and a race and a Kohler drive that. Then we look at the groupings of other streets that are near those streets. So, like, another year, it might be in the northeast part of the city. It might be in the northwest part of the city. There's really no, as a staff, all, it's all our streets that we're trying to manage. So, it really, you know, and it's not that we go and pick out and we say, "Well, I think we're going to do something in, you know, West Urbana this year." It's really how it comes up in the list, based upon how it's evaluated on an annual basis.
So, if you can send me, because I've only been here thirteen years, but I've never seen this, I know we've patched because this winter was absolutely terrible in, for the entire city. But the unleveled streets, and I can name Bucie and Fairview, they did do Kohler when they did the fairgrounds, but that was with Carl Hospital. There are several streets that I know have been the same way since I've been here.
Sure.
And I'd like to see when they came up or when they've been analyzed or to get on the list or...
There's...
How do we get them addressed?
There's a listing in, we have the street ratings in the capital improvement plan.
I don't understand it.
I'll be happy, I'll be happy to sit down with you, ma'am, and I can explain that. Now, one of the things that's going to happen in the future here is we've, you know, we've talked internally. We, we, you know, we only have a finite amount of money. But a lot of this, we're going to be looking at our primary streets as our first streets that we, we resurface. So, that means the, it's kind of like with the snow route. I mean, you know, the, the races, the Lincolns, you know, the Bradley Avenues, those type of primary streets. And then we also set a portion of the local motor fuel tax money aside, and we'll discuss this further with the, the new plan, aside for pavement preservation, that we can then reset some of these, the lower volume streets. But what drives a lot of this is volume of traffic, a bus route, the condition, whether or not it's basically, it's a drainage condition, a foundation condition, a surface condition, those type of ratings with there. But I'm happy to sit down with you.
And, and I'd like for you to look at Fairview in particular because Fairview is a bus route. It's a main thoroughway to Carl Hospital, and it's really in...
West and east of Lincoln?
Yes.
Yes, and, and I will tell you that the plan this year would be to patch Bradley Avenue is, is a priority.
Bradley at that area.
And then, if we, if we have some surplus money, we would come down to, to Fairview to patch and, and look at that, too. Okay?
Eric Jacobson.
So, I, I am sort of, I'm trying to pick up on the, on what, what Mike said. It seems to me that we've sort of got a trade-off. You're always better off in terms of dollars and the cost of money to spend money later than sooner. On the other hand, if you're deferring maintenance, there's another cost to deferring it, which is that the, or, or deferring repair. And that is that the repairs may be more costly after you've deferred them. So, I don't know if it's possible to, to answer Mr. Madigan's question in terms of, you know, how much interest, for example, you know, how much it's worth to save interest payments on the loan for resurfacing Windsor as opposed to the, what you expect the additional cost to be of, of maybe deeper level of repairs or just degradation of the transportation experience? So, maybe, that sounds very complicated to me, to compute those trade-offs, but I, I wonder if you could say something about, about that.
Well, with respect to the debt service, so right now, we're looking at a little over six million dollar project, so with Windsor Road. And that, the balance of that with, we're, we're looking at a debt service around three point five million. And then if you look at a ten-year debt service at two percent, which we're hoping will get a better price than that, we did get that better price on the Boneyard, we're looking at an annual payment of about four hundred thousand dollars for a ten-year debt service. This program right now, we're looking at one point eight. You would still have to bet debt service the remainder amount. I mean, we, we don't have enough money to just write off the three point five. So, you still have to do some debt service on, on the balance. If we were trying to save that, I mean, ideally, you would not want to debt service anything. And we would want to, you know, pay it basically as we go. But then, you know, I think, be honest with you, if we waited, we couldn't, we can't go through another winter with Windsor Road. We'd have to close portions of the road to do that. But with respect to, I mean, I, I guess we could go, but that's just something that, I don't know, Bill, you have any input on this, but...
Be nice to borrow maybe fifteen million. I think when you see the capital improvement plan presentation this year, Craig has done an excellent job in evaluating all the streets in the city. And, yeah, this was a rough winter, but on potholes, but we have a lot of streets that need a lot of help. And I think what Craig is saying tactfully is, if you look at our primary streets, there's a lot of streets that are just worn out. I mean, they're forty, fifty, sixty or more years old, and you can only resurface and patch cracks and do a patching here and there for so long. And these are all kind of coming to roost in many respects. Springfield Avenue West needs a lot of work. Drive Green Street sometime, that needs to be reconstructed. Florida, really, at some point, needs to be reconstructed. We tried, the list goes on. Maken Avenue was not in good shape. I mean, these are significant roads, major roads, major, major dollars. We can't pay as you go in this case, unfortunately. I wish we could. I wish we had a five million dollar fund balance to just take three million from. So, we have to do Windsor Road now, I think that's apparent. We can't wait on that any longer. If you delay these resurfacing, one point eight million, these roads are going to continue to get worse and worse. And there is, if you look at a, I wish we had a graph to show, but if you can picture a rating and a time graph, and if you have a, a street that's in excellent shape, you just build it, and over time, it degrades a little bit. But there's a point in time where it literally hits the cliff and, and drops, and then you're in the reconstruction mode, such as West Springfield by Phillips Rec., for example. And you want to catch those streets before they hit the knee and the curve and, and drop off quickly because once you have a failed subbase, the pavement, whether it's asphalt or concrete fails, you're reconstructing. And reconstructing is four or five times, you know, even a resurfacing situation. So, that's what we're trying to do, is it's more penny wise, excuse me, or, or, not anyone use that as an example, but we wanted to be, spend fewer dollars to push the pavement up to a higher rating than wait until it fails. Secondly is, is that we're going to get more aggressive with pavement preservation. So, this is different seal coatings and slurry seals and micro surfacings and such. And Craig, I mean, I like what he's bringing to the table here. It's been absent maybe a little bit in, in the past, and you can blame that on me, I guess, but Craig's looking at more preservation of pavements. And that's even less dollars per square yard being used to keep the pavements in good shape rather than letting them get to a point such as West Illinois Street or whatever. So, there's a combination of tools and programs that we need to do, and it's a little bit everything. I can't, we don't want to discard one for something else. So, I think it's a blend. And, yes, it's going to be a debt service, three fifty, four hundred thousand a year. Depends if we go ten, fifteen, twenty years. Those are discussions Rachel and I are having as we speak. We're still trying to identify the funding source, what we want to use for Windsor Road. But it's a really good question, and I, I fully understand and respect it. And I think, I think we would be, it would not be a wise decision to put off the resurfacing of this street and do the other pavement preservation tactics that we want to take on. So, I think Greg, Craig, I should say, is, is, is getting a good handle on the entire system. He's spent a lot of time out looking at all the roads and continuing to do that. And I think, I'd like to think in the next five years, we're going to see a significant improvement in what we have now. But, yeah, this winter really exposed a weakness that we have out there, and there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I'm concerned about the available dollars.
First the Mayor and then Charlie.
The, there's a huge cost to the public to not have roads be repaired. We're not just talking about the cost to the city. I think they're doing, they have the right approach to the city. It's better to catch it before it deteriorates too much. But to keep in mind, the situation we find ourselves in is that the motor fuel tax has not been changed for over twenty years. And the cost of doing roads has gone up every year in those twenty years. So, we don't have any debt service right now. And I think that to borrow three million, three and a half million for Windsor Road, it's a critical enough artery for commerce and for people getting to and from work that it's worth to do it that way. And that was one of the reasons why we were one of the, well, Danville did it before we did, but we were one of the, we were ahead of champagne on getting a local motor fuel tax because we're so starved for money just to keep those pavements in decent working condition and prevent them from getting to the point where you have to spend even more money. So, I think Public Works does keep a really good logical approach to this, spending the, the money where you're going to get the most for every dollar.
Charlie.
I'm actually going to go a little step further. If we're going to borrow three and a half million, should we borrow four and a half or five million to take care of any other roads that are labeled poor right now? You know, do we have other roads that are as bad as, as the worst ones that are listed here? And Windsor, of course.
And I, I think that's an analysis that is ongoing here, that we floated that. You know, there's that fine margin, I think it's Mr. Madigan's alluding to with debt service, too, you know. So, you know, the, the, the issue is how much money? I mean, we get, right now, we're getting about seven hundred and some thousand on local motor fuel tax annually. And we were getting a million on state motor fuel tax annually, and now it's actually down another fifty thousand this year. So, really, we have about one point seven to work with. And then we have some general fund money, too, that we use to fund things. But I think that's a good point, too, if we can grab things and reset them. So, it's a balancing thing that I think we're looking at, and then we'll come to council, you know, and further discuss that.
Carol Ammons.
I guess something that would help is to know how we're going to be able to service the debt, right? Where's the money going to come from for that? Seeing that our tax revenue is down, based on the Carl effect. And we haven't figured out how to make that up yet either. So, I think we should certainly know that before we actually agree to borrow and not know how we're going to pay for it.
Right.
Eric.
Well, we're going to have to borrow. The only question is how much? Are we going to have to borrow the full three and a half million? Are we going to have to borrow two and a half million and defer this? So, I don't think there's a way around that. And I'm persuaded, in this particular case, that, that, that we should go ahead with these repairs now, even though it's going to, as, as Mr. Madigan pointed out, it is going to increase by approximately a million dollars, the, the, the amount of our debt service. a million dollars, the amount of our debt service. So, I'm going to, I'm going to move, sending this to council with a recommendation for approval.
Okay, who was second?
Charlie.
Charlie, okay. All right. Any other discussion before this happens? Michael.
Yeah, I just want to make a couple of clarifications. I just wanted to raise this point, just to have the discussion about, can any of these projects be deferred? Okay, a couple of these streets have, have actually been graded fair at this point, and I will, I actually argued with Bill here a second ago about the condition of Illinois, and I'm going to retract my statement, because I travel Illinois to the east of there, and not so often in those four blocks, and that, those four blocks are rougher, no doubt. But, you know, Broadway, I mean, I'm no engineer, but I do drive that street with regularity, and it just seems to me like it could go for a year. I'm wondering, you know, how many of these blocks could just go for a year, is all I'm suggesting. And Eric actually brought up that, I'm not suggesting don't borrow any of the money, I understand that that's not even feasible, the numbers don't add up here, we're at 1.8, we need 3, 3.5. I understand that borrowing is necessary, but can it be mitigated to a degree, is the only discussion that I want to have here. And I just think deferred maintenance on roads that are graded fair this year, I would like to see the argument be made by the engineers, that one year will cost the city more in the long run than bonding the money for those roads. And I just, I have a suspicion that that, that it won't come back that way. All right? I know it puts everything back another year, I totally get that. But, one year on a road that's graded fair today, you're still talking about a resurfacing project, not rebuilding the road, if you defer it for a year. That's my only point here. I think we could strike a happy balance here of maybe deferring a couple of these projects, maybe even just shaving a million, a million and a half, even a million dollars. That is, that's big money to a city like Urbana, in terms of deferring, not deferring, in terms of not borrowing that money and the debt service their own.
Okay, Bill.
One thing that we are hopeful for is, as the state legislature looks at a new capital bill, we would like to be putting forth several projects, road, transportation-related projects for funding, and if perchance, we are successful in one or two or three, or whatever the number might be, to the tune of X million dollars, then I would like to say that that would help offset costs of some of these streets that Craig had mentioned. And we would look at callable bonds, so that if we happen to receive X dollars, we could perhaps pay those bonds off sooner and mitigate some of that interest payment. So, that's something we don't know, but we'd like to work with our state legislatures to, you know, look at some projects for consideration for rebuilding and what have you. We've had great success in the past, Limpin' Drive, High Cross Road are examples, so that's something that we're hopeful for, and that would reduce that bond impact for us.
Carol, did you have a question? Okay. All right, any other comments or questions? All right, let's take a vote, and those in favor of that resolution, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? Okay, that goes forward.
Thank you.
Thanks, Craig. Number 11, motion to approve the use of city funds for the Sim Hackberry Memorial, 312 South Kohler Avenue. Mike Brunk, our arborist.
I'm bringing Lisa up here with me tonight, because she's instrumental in helping me create an RFP for artisan work for this memorial proposals, that depending on how we go tonight, we'll be advertising in the near future, hopefully. So, what this is about is that we have had a public response to a removal of a very important tree to the community. It's our largest street tree, and I think, for the most part, that that public response has turned out to be a positive thing for the city. And from that, I think there is an acceptance of our removal of the tree and a suggestion by the neighborhood group to have, memorialize the tree, have a desire to memorialize the tree. From that, and from the press, we started to get suggestions on how to memorialize the tree, and in fact, we've got numerous artisan proposals on wanting to get involved in how they would suggest to memorialize the tree. Well, all that came together, we had the group present those ideas to the Tree Commission, and it was our desire to do this in an official way with the city, so we got Lisa involved, and we mimicked the Public Arts Commission's method for choosing arts, artists for different art projects. And that's, the end result will be our RFP, where we're requesting artisan proposals. We will send out that RFP to all the artisans that have already submitted ideas and proposals, and then we'll see if we get any more. The funding that the neighborhood group has raised is not a lot, it's about $100, it is $100 for this project, and I may have another $500 available from commitments on, from people who want to purchase slices of the trunk, or a portion of their, we call them tree cookies. So, we very well may have $600 that we could put towards this project. For the purpose of the RFP, Lisa and I were talking, we really wanted to have an amount going into that RFP, so we could tell artisans that we have a set amount of money, and that we would be providing a portion of it towards the project, to their project, a set amount. So, that's our purpose for coming here tonight. It's also my purpose for finding some funds that I thought could be utilized for this. My hopes is that we could reimburse some of those funds through various ideas, some of which I brought tonight. And then I'll, actually want to show you some of the proposals. So, some of the proposals that have already come in are very interesting. To the left of the document here, we see a conference table, and the idea behind this proposal is to create a fine-quality crafted conference table that would go in this council chambers, either right here where we're sitting, or for the information table in the back here. The interesting thing of this piece is that the artisan keeps the natural wood edge along the edge of the table, and so the thought was that we could memorialize the hackberry by creating something from it, which is kind of a new thing that's happening around the country due to urban wood utilization. A lot of the urban trees that are coming down now are being utilized for lumber and being utilized to be, to be made into furniture and cabinets and things like that. So, that's becoming more and more popular, mostly due to the Emerald Ash Bor and the need to utilize some of these trees, rather than just to trash them or recycle them into firewood or mulch. Over here on the opposite side, was one of the first artisans that came to us, he made a little model that I brought with me today, and this person wants to make a rough-hewn bench out of the wood. His idea was to take a slice of the trunk, use half of it for the back of this bench, and to create a timeline on the tree rings, signifying important dates in Urbana. So, that was an interesting piece. Below the bench is an artisan that came to us that said he would like to carve some, have a limb, some of the limb wood to carve an owl out of. He would do this for no cost, was looking to dedicate this piece to the Urbana Park Some of the other proposals, there was an artist that suggested she would like to paint the tree and did a rough drawing, oops, rough sketch, which is the colored version on the left, and said there could be some detailed inserts that she would charge us for, that we could replicate and then resell. The detailed botanical drawing on the right is completed. That was done for the purpose of our first legacy tree publication, since we want to include this tree in that publication. Another idea that was suggested is a museum-type tree cookie. This piece would be actually something that would need to be preserved and soaked in a chemical, and sanded, and it would take a little time to do, the chemical is fairly expensive, and making the stand for the cookie is fairly expensive. So, this is one of the more expensive projects, is this display, but the thought would be a display like this could create a historic timeline relative to Urbana, and it could be setting outside the council chambers here, or in another public place, whether it's the public library or the civic center. Some of the, let's see, I brought a painting that another artist provided, she just sent it, she was interested in the whole ordeal with this, she saw a wall dog painting from Danville, and she provided this for us to sell, to acquire funds for this memorial. And she just did that out of the kindness of her heart, she wanted to participate. So, it's a nice painting of hackberry leaves and fruit, and she's written in Japanese symbols, "Remember," and the date, 2013. Like I said before, the hope is that we can raise some funds for this project, that we still will be able to sell a few more tree cookies, that we may be able to provide maybe even the botanical drawing for fundraising. Oh, I forgot to mention that there's 300 cuttings of the hardwood cuttings that the Champaign County Master Gardeners came and helped us do at the time of this removal. Those have been taken over to the University of Illinois greenhouses, and our Tree Commission Chair, Jeff Dawson, is overseeing, trying to propagate those. So, those may be something that we could sell for a few funds. More importantly, what we hope to achieve out of that is to provide the genetics of this tree, which is a very good hackberry tree structurally, with the nature of its branches and everything, it was a little unusual. I hope we can replicate that and provide its genetics to the community through those saplings. And that was the mayor's idea, actually, so we jumped on that, and we'll see if we can't get that to happen. Any questions?
Okay, Eric.
So, would these saplings ultimately be trees that the city would plant in parkways at different places across the city as they, you know, in the ordinary tree planting program?
A few of them could be, and we hadn't really lined out exactly what we wanted to do with them. I think the thought was that they may be taken to the farmer's market this summer and sold to the public for a few dollars, it could go towards the legacy tree program or this memorial. But certainly, we could grow a few of them out to a little larger size and use them for parkway trees. There actually is one sapling that we found, it's in about 25 feet from the tree, that we think is from its root stock, so the ultimate goal was to have some sapling growing in the same location of this tree, and we already have that.
Charlie.
Mike, are you looking for an upper limit number then, tonight? You know, $1,000, $1,500, and with the thought that you'd be able to, between fundraising and selling, mostly make up that money?
Yes, I think so. I think, the way I had set the request was, is a not-to-exceed amount. The not-to-exceed amount of $5,000 would allow us to do about nine of the projects, plus or minus. But certainly, that, that amount is flexible, and it just, well, the number of projects that we can do will be set to the limit of funding that we have.
Other comments? Yes, Diane.
If you didn't use the tree inventory funds for projects like this, what could you use those funds for?
Well, I think the funds, the surplus you're talking about that was left over from this project will go back towards the deficit, any deficit, for the budget year, so it'd be returned, it'd be reabsorbed.
And I understand, my first reaction when I read this memo was, well, why don't we turn to the Public Arts Program funds for these art projects memorializing the tree? And so, rather than using Public Works funds for this. So, that would be, my first question is, why can't we use Public Arts funds for this particular project? Particularly, if we are looking at $1,000 as an upper limit, for example.
Our budget has already been allocated for this year, we don't have anything left, anything extra, so we don't have anything to pull from necessarily.
What all we've done are the Public Arts grants to this point, as far as I know, is that not right?
I'm not sure about that, but as far as how the funding's allocated, that's already been allocated. There's marketing funding and other things in the budget, I mean, there's nothing in there that's left over.
But it hasn't been spent?
No, no, that is correct.
So, there's nothing to say we can't redirect use of some of those funds for these art projects?
Technically, but from the budget as it already exists, the money has already been allocated, but it just hasn't been spent.
No, those are the, those are the Public Arts grants, those aren't, there's more money in the Public Arts budget other than that $47,000 in grants, right?
Yes.
Am I mistaken? Yeah, so, so that was my first, my first reaction, and then just my initial concern that, that we not spend Public Works dollars that could go for other expenses to, to these projects. So, and I would hope there was more public buy-in as far as support for these projects. I had assumed that there would be more public fundraising to this point, and I guess that hasn't happened yet, is that right?
That's right, not yet, but I did confer with Steve, and he is interested in pursuing that further with anybody else that's interested, so I don't know that there's, that's, that's an end at this point, there may be more fundraising. I'm hoping there is. What I was looking for tonight is a dedicated amount that we could at least start with, maybe build upon, so we could go up with this RFP and have an amount that we could take out to the artisans that we would, you know, have available for them, that they would know about, so they could create their projects from a set amount. So, I don't think it's the end of fundraising, but that's why I came tonight prior to the RFPs.
Charlie.
I have a suggestion, I was going to go this way anyway, but you've given me a better idea for how to do it. Could we, could we ask you to, you know, get some estimates on how much you think you can raise from the different things, and we need to find out if the trees are, the propagation of the trees is working. Talk to Steve, see what, see where things can go, take a look at the arts budget and see if that's got a little bit of play in it, so that we could pick a number and, you know, between fundraising, sales that you've got in mind, and then a little bit of backup from the, from the, from the arts budget, set a number. And then, you know, if we're, we're off by, you know, $500, that's not going to break the bank, but, you know, I don't want to be off by $2,000.
I can tell you tonight, I think we can do, you know, if we, if we were to have allocated funds of $1,000 from the city, I think we could do at least one of the projects, maybe several of the projects. So, I can say that comfortably tonight, that would give us, I'm hoping, $1,600, because I do have $500 committed, and $100 already kind of in the line item from a donation.
So, you think we can easily raise $1,000 here, plus what you've got there then, to make that up, to, or we just need to allocate $1,000 for this?
Well, I'm saying if you allocated, if you provided $1,000 to me tonight, as, from city funds, that I could, I'm comfortable with what we have and maybe what else we could raise, and we could get a few of what else we could, uh, raise and we could get a few of these projects done. So we could have a memorial, uh, and kind of move on from this and, and be set. And it would be a fairly, uh, inexpensive way, uh, to finalize the memorial, but I think a thousand dollars or thereabouts would still work for us if you wanted to provide that minimal.
Okay, so, so to follow up on, on that idea then, can, can you look at the arts budget and see if you can take a thousand dollars from there? Uh, cause then I'm not sure where else we would take it from at this point, unless the mayor has a better idea.
Mayor?
Um, we, his proposal is to take it from, um, tree inventory funds.
Surplus.
Yeah, and it's sort of trees to trees, but, um, we have a legacy tree program. We don't have any funding for it, do we?
No.
So I, I think this is sort of like a legacy tree program.
Actually, that memo wasn't in my packet, so I didn't.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Well, anyway, he's asking for, he says he has five thousand in remaining tree inventory funds to cover the cost for selected memorial projects that are being proposed for this historic hackberry. I would think the people who really love the tree would be really happy to plant a sapling, you know, maybe let the U of I grow them to a big enough height and then learn how to take care of the tree. And, uh, I think that would be a great project.
Mike?
I would think the people who really love the tree would be willing to donate some money toward this whole project, but with only a hundred dollars in the kitty, I think maybe the thing to, to do is what most folks do when they have a fundraiser is open a bank account and let's publicly ask people to send money to the bank account.
Well, that's a very good question and I started down that road, but, um, and Jim, you can speak to this.
Did you get shut down by a lawyer?
Always.
Uh, you want to speak to that, Jim?
Real briefly, without getting into a long explanation. When a municipality engages in direct fundraising, there's always the potential of appearances of impropriety. There are ways of doing it, uh, that we could avoid those potential improprieties. For example, if somebody donates a hundred dollars and they happen to have a, a, a fine that suddenly gets waived, even though they may be disconnected, somebody else's fine isn't waived, is going to say, oh, they bought their way out of the fine. So you have to be very careful.
I get all of that, but I guess, uh, where I'm going here is, uh, the folks who are, are, who love, loved the tree, uh, there's nothing stopping them from organizing, uh, a bank account, uh, to help fund these kind of things with, uh, uh, and cooperating with the city on, on the projects. I just don't, I don't, I don't see, I don't see this being a wise expenditure, a taxpayer dollars. Uh, trees are beautiful living things, but they're just that, they're living things and when they die, they die. And we have hundreds of, uh, potential, uh, offspring of this tree and to my mind, that ought to be good enough.
Carol?
I just wanted to follow up on a question Diane asked earlier is, the request was to come from the, um, tree, what is it called?
Inventory, yeah, tree inventory fund.
Fund. What, what is the actual fund normally used for?
Well, that fund was used for, uh, inventorying our trees over the past year or so to allow us to understand what condition they were in, so we can determine what maintenance and when the maintenance is and what trees are removed and all of that stuff. We partnered with the Park District, which saved us, uh, about ten thousand dollars, uh, in cost. So we, uh, uh, our estimate for that cost was budgeted. Uh, we came in under that amount, so we have about ten thousand dollars left in that that would be returned back to the, the general fund.
But you'll still be inventorying trees at some point?
Yes, on an ongoing basis, but, but with in-house, uh, uh, people and in-house hardware. So this got us set up to do that. It's a, it's like a one-time cost.
But we won't need that fund anymore? Is that what I'm understanding?
The amount that, that's left over, we won't need, uh, for tree inventories in the future, that's right.
Bill?
Um, I guess, is there a way to value the in-kind contributions people are making with the growing of the three hundred saplings?
Well, that's, that's the University of Illinois that's doing that for us.
And they aren't charging us for that?
That's correct.
Okay. So I guess I'd be in favor of kind of considering that a contribution, um, because somebody arranged that, whether it was from the U of I or, or how it worked. And then I, if, if they could raise some matching funds, I'd guess I'd be willing to, you know, try to match up to three thousand dollars or something like that. So you, when you were thinking this five thousand, you were thinking we would get reimbursed some of that from the sale of some of these projects and?
Well, it, you know, if you look at a sapling like that, we may be able to sell them for fifteen, twenty dollars each, ten dollars each, something like that. Uh, hardwood cuttings are very hard to propagate, so we're not, uh, certain that we're gonna get three hundred saplings. We may get fifty, uh, we may get a hundred, something like that.
Okay.
The tree cookies were actually a higher commodity. They were, I had sold two of them or had commitments from two people to buy, uh, the larger cookies for two hundred and fifty dollars each.
So if we, if we gave you this like five thousand working funds, would you think that half of it would get reimbursed, something like that?
Possibly. Uh, you know, I, I guess we could, we could go about it this way, that we, um, not expend any more than what we could match.
And as far as covering it with public arts money, it does seem like with, out having a coordinator for half the year, there ought to be extra money in that fund. That's what I'm trying to figure out. Um, but I also understand that, that a lot of it is funded through TIFs, so I don't think we could really use TIF money for this since it was outside the TIF district. Um, but if there's gonna be leftover money in the arts fund, then that would also go back to the pool to reduce the deficit. Is that right? Or you go back to TIF money, I guess?
Raise your hands? Okay.
But if the finished product ended up in the TIF district, couldn't it qualify? I, I truly believe these are art projects and it should be within our public arts budget.
Uh, Carol, and then I wanted to actually comment.
Actually, I was gonna make a motion to defer it so that we could find out, uh, cause I agree that this is an art project and it really should be done through the art, uh, commission. And so I, I, my motion is to defer this item and I'll defer it to the next committee of the whole so that, um, we can get more information as to whether our arts commission could take care of this project.
Second?
I think that just defers it till the next meeting, right? Not yet.
Sending it to committee is different from the council deferral rule. So we're just sending it to committee, which is perfectly good, but, you know, we don't, we don't have that same level of formality of deferral for, uh, for committee meetings.
All right.
So.
Motion to, to take, to move it.
Send, just keep it, it's basically, it's a motion to keep it in committee for, and take it back up in two weeks and we ask staff to go find out more information.
Yeah.
Which is, which is a good thing. Cause, you know, you can go figure out how much money can be matched, whether there's some slop in the art budget and so on, uh, because every penny we have, we can put into potholes. Huh? Yeah, potholes and roofs and things like that, so.
So Bill, would you call on me? Would you, would you please take over the meeting for a minute?
Dennis.
All right, thanks. All right. One of the other things that, that came up in, in the, uh, tree commission meeting, uh, besides, besides the fact that, that, uh, there's an interest in using the existing wood to memorialize the tree, which not everybody agreed to, but, I mean, that's pretty much where we're at now because I, the, the act and, the action of memorializing the tree and using the wood would basically, um, require the tree to be leveled to the ground so that the wood could be, uh, accessed. So there would not be, so that would be basically a decision not to keep, um, the tree in sight as a, a pillar, as a memorial itself. And we've had different conversations about that. But, um, during the commission meeting, I, I may also made a suggestion, which is also going to be something that I think the tree commission's gonna revo, to evaluate, and that is, um, how to, how to mark the trees, not just this hackberry, but future trees for, uh, as legacy trees in our community. And, um, so I drafted in a, a concept for, um, very small legacy tree plaques to go in the positions where the trees that are nominated successfully would be, um, visibly marked at their location. And this would be trees that, um, you know, have, are not, uh, being removed, but these, they're being, they're healthy trees that would have, um, a long life ahead of them, but because of the uniqueness or their species would also be nominated potentially. But as you know, um, individuals have to nominate the trees. There's a fee to do that. But I'm suggesting that there is a potential other use or other aspect of the tree, the legacy tree program that, um, might want to be considered, also has a financial aspect to it. So if the, if the, uh, purpose is to memorialize a tree, I would suggest taking one or two good suggestions and going with those instead of doing seven mediocre ones or, you know, I think that there needs to be, I, I appreciate the fact that the arts commissioner is, uh, and the arts commission may be involved in this in a more, um, official way to kind of, uh, make a decision that's stronger rather than, uh, less advantageous. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I'll take the meeting back. Mayor?
I, I just think it's a good idea for people to, um, be asked to match city funds. It seems like we can get more leverage that way, cause we're in very tight financial situation. But I also think that if you had some money left over from the tree inventory, it makes it, uh, reasonable to use it as, dare I say it, seed money for the legacy tree program.
Yes, Eric? So do I, I, I guess the other, other question I want to ask, just a logistical question, is, is the wood from the tree being stored in a way that it'll just be around for as long as it takes us to make up our mind what to do with it?
That's a very good question and one we asked ourselves. So we think we have time. Uh, the trunk is still standing. Uh, we think we have, uh, the spring season, maybe even the summer season to decide what to do, where that wood could still be milled and dried. Uh, we did find a, a sawyer that's willing to mill and dry the wood for no cost, uh, for, in return for fifty percent of the lumber. Um, and hackberry's fairly rare, uh, for, um, woodmakers to have availability for. So that was kind of an exciting component, but we, I think we've got the spring and summer to make our decision and still be okay. Whether we leave the, the tree standing as a pillar or we take it down as a trunk or we utilize the wood for projects. And I, I would agree with Dennis. I think, you know, it's very viable to do a good couple of projects. Um, we don't have to do them all, um, to memorialize this tree. I think that's a very viable idea.
Eric? So I guess I'll just, this isn't really directly the topic tonight, but I'll, or it's not exactly what you've asked us, but it seems to me that, um, after this season, it probably makes sense to take it down, have the wood, because then there'll be something there forever. If it just stands there, it's just gonna, you know, deteriorate and deteriorate and finally get pretty gnarly looking.
Well, that was a, I mean, that, that's a very good point. There's all kinds of opinions on what we should do and that's why we thought it best to get this jury selected, which would be two tree commissioners, two art commissioners, uh, two, uh, members of the public and two staff members to come up with a, a well-rounded decision on which way to go with this.
Okay, Madam Clerk, could I ask you a question? So there's been a request that this be deferred, uh, but is it true that we're only gonna be able to defer items during a council meeting? And so is it the appropriate, uh, motion that we would just, um, keep this in committee?
Yes.
Okay. So, um, is there a motion then to keep this in committee? It, it's been made. It's been moved in second. Sorry, so we've been, all right, so we've answered that. Therefore, uh, no further discussion. I'll ask that, um, those in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye? And any opposed? All right, thank you then.
All right. Thanks very much.
Thanks, Mike.
Lisa. We have, uh, two items that were added to the agenda and the first will be discussion of council goals.
Okay, well, um, Mike wasn't able to make tonight's meeting, but, uh, with respect to city goals, we're at the point where we need to sort of si, figure out what we want to keep and, and which parts to toss out. So I'm gonna suggest, uh, and this is something I discussed with Mike earlier today, is that, um, get, get you fresh copies of the city goals. We've got some comments that have come back and Mike's incorporated, uh, but, uh, from the public, uh, that you take the goals and you, you go through them and, and decide yes, no on, on each of the items that are listed and, uh, in terms of the, the tasks that are the, the third column, I think, the second or third column here. Anyway, I'll figure out which column you, you probably should say yes or no to and then, and then prioritize, uh, from, on a one to five scale where one is high priority and five is low priority, those things that you, uh, that you vote yes for. Uh, then Dennis and I could sit down together, consolidate, you know, combine that into one document where we, we, uh, rank what people say yes and no ver, no for and, and average the priorities. That would take us a couple of weeks to do or something like that.
Okay, so there's return to trying to locate and finalize our city council goals. Okay, first, uh, well, yeah, I'm gonna see the mayor. Diane, you want to make a?
I just had a question. Where are the goals with the comments? Will we be sent them or should we get them off the website?
Uh, no, we'll, we'll get you copies with someplace to make an annotation.
So you're gonna send it to us?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, and Mayor?
I just wanted to say that we don't have a meeting next Monday, cause it's the fifth Monday.
Oh, yeah, all right.
So keep that in mind. Our next meeting will be April seventh, I believe, the city council meeting, so it would be the fourteenth when you have next committee meeting.
Yeah, yeah, and.
So that gives you time.
Three weeks to, 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 to get the material to, you know, it'd be good to get it to Dennis and I in say about two weeks so that we can put it all together in that third week. Though I'm gonna be very busy until the fifteenth of April.
And I, and I will.
As will I.
And I will say that, um, Mike's mother died today, so he is not here this evening. So he's gonna need some time, but we've got three weeks, I guess.
Well, we're getting closer. We, we can still have goals in June. Carol?
I just wanted to clarify that you will send us all the comments that we got?
Yes, yeah. Though, though, uh, Mike may have them all, I'll, I'll see if he, I can get them from him.
Okay. Any other further comments about the, the goals? All right. Uh, now we'll have a discussion about reconsidering digital billboards.
So I'm not sure about, um, the processing in committee of the whole, so I need to get clarification from either clerk or attorney. Um, we had a discussion, um, several meetings back about considering a study item for staff on digital billboards for the city of Urbana. Since that point, I've had about, um, twelve meetings with people interested in the digital billboards in Urbana and wanting that item to be considered for study. Not necessarily that we will pass it or it will pass the council in some future date, but for consideration of study for staff to look at that item. Um, and so I'd like to make a motion for reconsider so that it can be moved to city council officially from the committee of the whole. How do we do that?
Well, first of all, I, I don't recall whether in fact there was a vote to deny billboards or the council chose not to accept it. If the council voted to deny action, actually voted down a proposed ordinance, uh, then what's required under the Illinois municipal code is all the council members or that the same number of council members who were present during that vote, and I don't know what that number is, be present, uh, to recommence. And obviously there's, right now, there's a, you know, you know, unanimous presence, uh, here. So it would be a new item. You're not repealing something because there's nothing been enacted. So it'd be a new item. So if, if there's a motion to be made, uh, you or somebody else would be free to make it. Now if there was an action to adopt something and now you want to repeal what was adopted, let's say some kind of a billboard ordinance that was actually adopted and you wanted to repeal it, uh, you, you would ha, you'd have a higher threshold of vote, but that would be how you would do it. Now, you, here it would be more of a, an information issue as opposed to a vote, an action vote, uh, because you're in the committee of the whole, other than to move something on to council.
So I guess my, um, hmm, I think that confused me a little more than.
Carol, I may be able to figure out.
I just want to move it to committee, to, to the city council. All right.
How about, uh, I can up the floor?
Yes, Charlie? Go ahead.
Jim, I mean, the way I'm reading this is that Carol would like to bring.
Jim, the way I'm reading this is that Carol would like to bring the issue again to committee, start the discussion all over again with potentially a new ordinance, is that?
No, not necessarily. We just want to study.
Carol, to look at that, to look at the issue again?
Yes.
We had an.
But not us staff.
Okay, we had an ordinance, you want staff to start looking at it, but that means they'll bring us an ordinance and/or, yeah, now I'm confused.
Okay, let's go one by one. Mayor?
Okay, is this in our goals? That we want to study this? So, why don't we just study it? You know, we can look into what was exactly the vote and everything, but you don't have to do it tonight. We could just come back and tell the council on the 7th where we are, and you can proceed.
I guess the only question I would raise from the goal standpoint is that the goals will be ranked according to what we just agreed upon, on most important, less important. And for some members, it may not be that important, so it may get ranked lower, and it may not be a part of the goals for this year, which would, of course, usurp the process of getting staff to look at it as an item, which is what my goal is. My goal is to get it from, that's why I said motion to reconsider, because we did vote on the study of billboards, and it did not pass to go on to staff. That's what I'm trying to correct, actually.
I'm not remembering what we actually, what the wording was that we voted on, but, Diane Marlin?
Well, we can go back and check this, but I believe that what we did is we had directed, we had moved direct staff to do a, basically a text amendment to the zoning ordinance, which is what you need to do to initiate a study of the digital billboards, but that failed four to, was it?
No, three, three.
Three to three.
Failed three to three.
Failed three to three, and, so it didn't go anywhere. So, to get this back in the pipeline, we would ultimately have to have that same sort of direction to staff to do a text amendment, according to Libby, is that, that's what Libby told me. So, the point is, how do we get to that point, and that is to get it back on a council agenda? Or a committee agenda?
I think we can just ask, if that's the case, we can ask the mayor to add it to a committee agenda, to get the text amendment back to the council.
That'd be most appropriate, yeah.
Well, I can check into it and see where we are. In, in setting the goals, it's really true that we want to set priorities, and, you know, we've had a lot of missing staff, that we're starting to hire people now, but we can't do everything, so it is reasonable for people to vote on what their priorities are. And I don't know how many studies we have in the goals, but I'm just saying that I don't think it's unreasonable to say that's part of the goal-setting process, but I will just bring back on the 7th exactly what we did and where we can go, okay?
Are you saying you would bring back this item on the agenda?
Yeah, well, yeah, we can talk about it. I, you know, it'll, it could just be a report that you ask the question, what do we have to do, and we'll figure out what we have to do and bring it back to you, and you can figure out what you want to do.
That's fine. That'll work. We'll put it back on the 7th.
Yeah, and then on the, by the 14th, we'll also know where we are on the goals, too, and then folks can make a decision. But I will remind you that, you know, unless there are five council votes for that text amendment to happen, we'll be just beating our heads against the wall.
Mike?
And while we beat our heads against the wall, I'll continue to spend money and champagne on digital billboards, because it's effective for my small business, okay? And that's one thing that I think we really need to consider here, is this is a great equalizer. Big business can buy billboards. Well, guess who's buying them in champagne? I am, right now, because I can get on a rotation on a digital billboard. Every mom and pop business in Urbana could take advantage of this, and there are definite advantages, and I think it is well worth studying. I think five votes ought to be put on that, to merely study the issue. I think ultimately, then, we would have the decision about whether or not it's appropriate for the City of Urbana, but I think it is a mistake to not at least take the step of looking at the issue, because I believe it's an effective tool for my small business, and could be for many across the city.
Eric, then Diane, then the mayor?
Well, this'll be especially of interest to Carol. Naomi found that the digital billboards were a good medium for her campaign.
Diane Marlin?
I would, I would just say that the discussion about five votes, I think, is premature. I mean, I know what, I know what you're saying, but I think when we have an issue like this, wherever there are strong feelings on both sides, we have a responsibility to at least discuss the issue and see what we can learn from it. And there may be things that none of us know that will come out of this discussion, but I think we owe the public the discussion on any topic that is controversial, not just digital billboards. We need to talk about this before we make a decision. And if it ends up not passing, well, that's the way it is, but, you know, we don't pass everything anyway, so, so we need to have this discussion.
And Mayor?
I just want to tell Mike that I've never seen your business advertised on a billboard, and we frequent your business, and we've liked it for years.
Word of mouth is the best advertising, of course. Charlie?
Well, I'll point out, we had a substantial discussion of this, and we failed to send a text amendment to staff. I mean, so, I mean, we've already spent substantial amount of time discussing this issue.
But we had a missing council member as well.
Yeah, but, like I'm saying, you know, we may have had a missing council member, but short of, you know, we had a large discussion. Short of having five votes to draft a text amendment, we'll be wasting our time. We've already spent substantial time on this.
So, hopefully, this won't take as much time as the study of roundabouts has done in the past, which we did due diligence to, of course, as you all might remember. Okay.
I think I looked at the last one.
So, we will, we may see a discussion in the future, and it'll be very exciting to have that discussion in council. Seeing no further business, I call us adjourned.